All right, everybody. Thanks for joining. My name is Todd Richards and I am with the County Freedom Coalition. And one thing I would like to ask everybody to do when you get this, watch this video, please like and share because this only just helps out the people that we've interviewed in the past and our current people and then the people in the future. So we can get this, all this information disseminated out to as many people as possible. So in this podcast, we are interviewing people who are trying to advance liberty and freedom in the state of Colorado. And we have two lovely ladies today, Cheryl and Laura from the Parker as a town council. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. So Cheryl is running for council again. So we'll just start off with her and, and could you just briefly talk about what, what your, what your platform is and where, you know, where, how you're running? What are you looking for to do in the, in the future for the town of Parker?
Well, let me start off by saying that Parker has a lot going for it. And I think one of the things we need is to bring a higher end job base into the community. Most of our people with the, you know, the higher end jobs travel into Denver, Denver Tech Center. Some now are working from home and we've seen a small change in the economy from that approach, but from things that I want to see, I want to see growth. I want to see commercial activity, but I want it to match the demands of the consumer. What do we really need? So the big controversy right now is the Main Street project. And the zoning there in that area, we have, is going to allow 60 foot high buildings. And one of the parcels is in front of our Pace Center, our, our arts and cultural center. And depending upon how it's brought forward, it could very easily hide that entire facility. I don't want to see that. And I'm not after, you know, to me, we want more vibrancy, but I don't want to do it at a cost to citizens, cost to existing facilities. So we haven't seen the final plans coming in yet. I think we'll be seeing that on November 7th, right before the election. No chance to debate what's going on there. I am concerned also with an area called Pine Curve. And the citizens have fought that for years for development on that curve. Citizens don't want quote unquote, more apartments. We have a lot of apartments in town. What we're after is condos and you know, there was a condo defects law which has been fixed in Colorado. So condos can be built. They're maybe not as profitable as long-term as, you know, apartments, but people who buy condos are transferring their assets into the town of Parker and they become more of a permanent part of the community, which is extremely important. So for me, I would like to see condos, not apartments. I don't want to see the height. And the area in front of the Pace Center, I feel needs to be kept as a gateway to arts, history and culture. I don't want that hidden. And I'm on the minority in council on this one, but we'll have to see what happens as this proceeds. Laura, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I would just, can you hear me? I would just say that, you know, Cheryl is Cheryl's correct. And at this point, the height requirement is 60 feet. According to the zoning and we are working with Confluence companies to create a new future for downtown Parker. And so we're going to have to see what type of plans come before us from Confluence company. And we will be discussing each one in, in a public session at town council with Confluence companies as these matters come before us.
And so we have several sites that make ideal commercial sites with ground floor commercial and preferably condos on the upper floors. But the two sites in question are Pace and Pine Curve, as far as I'm concerned.
So I just, I do have one question, just for listeners out there. Could you give us kind of a location of Parker? Where exactly? As I tell people where I'm from, they have no clue. So where exactly is, is Parker located?
We're about seven miles east of I-25. And about seven miles, depending upon what part of Aurora you're looking at, south of Aurora. So if you go to Havana and Parker Road, you can follow that south. And then you get to E-470 in Parker Road and you can take Parker Road South or not E-470, Highway 225. And you can take Parker Road South or you can take 470 going east or west. And where it starts to curve into the north section of E-470, Parker has some access there.
Okay. Yeah, just, yeah, I've always had the problem of I tell people where I live and they just go, they just give me the blank stare and go, I have no idea. I've never even heard of that place. So that's fine. A couple of little questions right off the bat, just for, for some folks down there. Can I ask you where you were born? Are you Colorado natives? Are you born in Denver? You born?
That's a good question. My father met my mother at Lowry Air Force Base. And so my mother was born in a boxcar in Frazier. Because my grandfather was the engineer when they built them off a tunnel.
Wow, that's a story.
Yeah, her family lived in Akron, Colorado. And she was a school teacher and she rode her horse to a one-room schoolhouse to teach school. Now where they met, I don't know. So I have a long family history here, but my dad was from Crookston, Minnesota, and that's where I was born.
All right.
And then my husband and I moved back to Denver and Parker. Well, I've been in Parker 50 years. And we moved back here from the Air Force in mid to late 1960s.
All right. Laura, where are you from?
Well, I was born in New York City and yeah, spent my childhood in New Jersey. And then at 20 years old, our family moved to Michigan and I graduated from Michigan State and went to law school at University of Detroit, downtown Detroit. But I really was itching to see the world and practice law somewhere else than Michigan. I was licensed in Illinois in 1992. I took my bar there and I went into the Army Judiciary General's Corps of Active Duty when I was 27. Had a long career, seven years active duty as a JAG officer. And then transitioned into a civilian career with the federal government as a banking law attorney, eventually administrative foreign military sales. A stint with the Department of Defense and then the control of the currency. And then after that decided during that time that my husband got married, had children. And so I am newer to Parker. I had moved to Colorado in 2001 after I got off active duty. And I was, I only lived in Parker 2011 now to present. And was asked to run for town council in 2020 by a lovely group of very involved ladies in politics in town. I happened to bump into them at the park when I was with my children. And so after that, they introduced me to everyone and I decided to run. And Cheryl was instrumental in helping me as well run and make those decisions. So I really appreciate Cheryl, Cheryl Pogue's help on everything. She's, I can't say enough of what a well of wisdom Cheryl is and how much she brings to town council. So this is my endorsement for Cheryl in upcoming in this race.
Well, thank you, Laura. Probably what I ought to do is provide a little bit of my professional background.
Sure.
So I have degrees in public policy and administration. A master's in education and technical communication and PhD studies at the University of Wyoming regarding instructional technologies. But I also have an associate's degree and have taught at community colleges with fire science technology. And so I have been in the fire service. I retired after 42 years with the fire service here in Parker. And then I also have worked with a number of federal and state agencies. I'm a contract employee for the US Fire Administration and the National Fire Academy. So involved in a lot of those areas and I have worked within a number of federal governmental entities. So I bring a background in government to help move Parker forward. Locally, when I first moved to town, there wasn't much here. We had hitch and posts and horses. So since then, we've had a lot of growth and a group and I started the Parker Parks Department. We started the, you know, the Cherry Creek Trail System, set up zoning and master plans for all the trails and parks. That keeps getting changed, but we created the first initial systems and we always wanted interconnecting trails to bring everybody into town and down to the Cherry Creek Trail. And then we were able to establish a connection with the E-470 trail. E-470 was not going to be putting in a trail until our group got them to go ahead and consider it, which subsequently they put in. So looking at that, what I have been involved with in town is quite a few of the governmental activities and how to make that flow. How do you work within government to make it positive and achieve goals? That's the hardest part in government is achieving the goal. And so for me, right now, there are a number of things that I want to see in the future. And I don't know if you're ready to go to that level at this point in this discussion.
Oh, I, you can go wherever you want. This is, this is all for, all for you. So yeah, I was just gonna, just to ask, oh, maybe we'll go back to that. Well, I can, I could probably answer this question before I even ask it. So has, has being in town council been a rewarding experience? And I can already probably tell you that both of you are going to say yes, very much so. Cause most people that don't have that rewarding experience, don't run again or get on and complain about it right away. You know, the town did this and that doesn't want to, doesn't want to do this. And obviously it's, it sounds like it's, it's going pretty well being on the town council. But Laura, you explained how, how you got on there. And I guess Cheryl, how did, how did you get from moving and living in Parker to being on that and the town council? And is this, how many times you've been on, on the council now? How many years?
Well, I've just completed my first term. So in the beginning of Parker, when I, I actually signed the incorporation papers for the town of Parker back in 1981. So I was involved in different activities and you know, like I said, I started the parks department back then and the trail systems. However, I was also in charge of Douglas County's parks and trail systems. And so I was able to collaborate between the two to get things to work. And eventually I just focused on Parker. But in how I got started, like I said, I was with the fire department for 42 years. And when you are asking for change and asking for demands and master plans from town council and you have developers on town council that don't want to give those things up, right? So there was conflict. So I said, okay, I'll just back off. I'm going to stay with the fire service. And when I retired, that's when I first decided to run. So I ran, you know, against the incumbent, Mike Wade, and I lost that. But then I ran for council the next session and that's when I first got in. So this is just my first term that's ending.
So it's been pretty enjoyable?
Yes and no. There's always, I think the council itself now is a fairly stable group. We kind of understand each other's opinions. They know I'm going to say no to things and they've accepted that. I don't just say yes, because everybody else is saying yes. So I find that there are things we're trying to get done in council that takes a while to work through. I'm happy to have people come forward and tell us, you know, what they want, the changes that they want, the problems that they're having. We cannot always solve those problems. But it's nice to hear what's going on and if we can try to make the change, we do. So I'd say it's a mixed bag.
Well, yeah, I don't think you'd be running again if it wasn't any, any good. So, but that's, it's good to know that it's good enough to, to have, to have you run again. How was your experience with that been? Laura, has it been pretty positive or?
Yes, I, I would say that sitting on town council does require a high level of experience first and foremost in life. Maybe you get that experience be by being a business owner. Maybe you get that experience by working a long time in a certain profession, IT, medical, firefighting, attorney, engineer. But it does require a great deal of knowledge about life's experience and a great willingness to learn about the town, how it operates, the staff, the directors and study the issues coming before you. I think in the past, more specifically, the 2020 election, we did not have a proper job description for town council. So many, many folks in the community ran. I think not understanding how involved the position is and how much time it takes. We do meet on Monday nights. Every Monday night and have a study session or a town council meeting. But there are so many events we attend as council members. There's interviews we do such as this one today to, to help the community understand what a town council member does. We talk to our constituents. We meet for coffee. We honor local businesses and churches in the community and synagogues, temples. We interact with a lot of people during the week. So the job is not just simply showing up on Monday nights and making a few decisions. It's a very active job. And as Cheryl pointed out, we have a very good council right now that is actively engaged and involved. And all of us are thinking these matters through while we don't always disagree. And sometimes the town council meetings can get a little intense. I don't think that ever bothers any of us as town council members. We all just want to get the facts and the evidence on the table and come to some logical conclusions and decisions about how to move the town forward. So right now on town council, we do have a great group as Cheryl mentioned. Everybody is working hard and we do have some difficult decisions before us. We have many in the past few months, we've, we've had to make them and not all of them popular. But I think as each decision comes before us, we study the facts, we study the evidence, we hear the, the briefings from the various departments and the various companies or folks that come before us or applicants. And then we make those decisions and ask the questions to try to come to a logical and proper conclusion on those issues.
So that brings up a question here and that is, what's the, what's the big five-year plan for Parker? You got, you got something, you know, what's, what are the, what are the folks down there looking at? Obviously talked about housing? Do you have a housing shortage or are there just too many apartments or?
Well, I think that's a fairly easy question to answer. We have, how many, I think 6,000 potential houses coming in. So it's not that we have a shortage. It's just that we have a shortage of affordable housing. And that's a different issue because these homes that are coming in are extremely expensive. And so when you talk about affordable housing, I think that's where you need to look at the, not the apartments, but the town homes at different scales of, you know, what the cost is or condominiums. And then you, because you have a broad range, you can bring in on a smaller piece of property, which will affect the cost of those homes and the cost of the utilities going in. The average cost of utilities is anywhere from 75 to $90,000 per unit on single-family housing. And that can be, you know, easily mitigated if you're going into town home complexes or condominiums, which will really help with a more affordable housing situation. We do have, you know, people who are having trouble paying their bills and we have, you know, a great group in town called the Parker Task Force, which is helping a lot of them. We have the Douglas County Housing Partnership, which also helps with that housing issue. Whether, and they do build, you know, affordable housing, but they also help people with managing their loans, getting lower interest rates on their loans. So there's, there's a way to work around that, but I don't think Parker is going to achieve quote unquote, affordable housing for quite some time. Simply because we don't have the older structures that like Denver has.
Right.
Or we just don't have it. Parker is a new build community. And you don't find affordable housing for the most part in new builds. As much as I would like that to happen.
So you were, you were mentioning something about, do you have to, if you want to go out to eat or go shopping or something like that, you do have to travel someplace else? You don't have a lot of that in, in town?
We're getting more and more. We've got some fairly good restaurants and you know, breweries and wineries and things like that. Everybody wants more. And I think that we're hoping to put into the Main Street project.
Right, right. Yeah, it seems to be, that's our problem. We want to go to a restaurant. We gotta drive to Greeley or Fort Collins or Windsor or something like that to get.
Where are you at?
I'm in Eaton. We're about, about 12 miles north of Greeley on US 85. So.
Well, I spend half my time in Redfeather. So I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yep. We're just a little bitty, a little bitty town on the I-85 corridor and we know Windsor's growing like crazy and same thing with Greeley, everything up here in Northern Colorado is going is just they're building houses by the tons up here and our problem is, is water. And yeah, they're just building houses and there's no, there's nothing else going in. So that, you know, a lot of people are complaining as, you know, where's the restaurants and the shopping and, and things like that, instead of just, you know, just houses, houses and houses. They're just, there's just everywhere you go out here, there's houses.
When you look at commercial development, they don't want to build where they have to wait for the customers.
Right.
They want the customers already there so that when they come in, they can start making their profit right away. And I don't see any way around that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that's a problem, you know, everywhere that people, you know, you want, you want to make money. I mean, that's the, the whole point of building a house or a mall or something like that. You know, you want people to come in there and, and be your tenants and start, you know, making yourself some money right off the bat. So.
Well, and when these new communities are planned and they come in, there's always a commercial center that's targeted in that community. But what happens is you get the residential first and then they're going to come in with the commercial and now you've got conflict. Because the residents don't want the increased traffic or, you know, they're not so sure they want that type of commercial in that location. And we have to go by what it was zoned for.
Right, right. All right. So I have a strange question because that just came up the, the other day for me. I ran for the, the rec department out here and how was it seeing your name on a ballot? Was that, was that a little unnerving or was it kind of, you know, kind of exciting to see your name on something like that? And getting to fill a little bubble in next to your name and, and do it that way. So.
You know, one thing I thought was interesting was I ran, you know, for the mayor, the one year and then town council, the next. And I was on the top position on the town council ballot, right across from the presidential list. So that I, that I liked.
That's pretty, that's pretty good. Hey, everybody's gonna, yeah, they're gonna read those and then slide over to the, slide over to your names right there. That's, that's pretty cool. But yeah, that was, for me, that was a little, is a little odd to have my name on a ballot. So kind of fun. So, so yeah, you're, so you're kind of down there in the southeast corner of Denver. What are some of the, the, the problems or any of the problems that are in Denver? The homelessness, a lot of the, the, you know, we hear about it all the time, the drugs and things like that. Are they making their, their way down there to Parker or is that?
Well, this is Laura's specialty and I'll say, yes, they are. We don't necessarily have the services available that are available in the higher density areas like Aurora and Denver. But Laura's, you know, working hard on that.
Yeah, I, I sit on the Douglas County Homeless Initiative. And this is a, a group of elected officials from all of the towns in Douglas County. We have meetings every month to discuss how to address the issues of people that need help. Maybe people are begging on street corners for funds from local residents. Maybe they are homeless, maybe they're not. We do need to help folks in Douglas County. Just because it is one of the wealthiest counties in the United States, we still do have homeless folks and people that really need help trying to survive. In fact, last night, the Parker Task Force gave us a briefing on this in what's going on and how many people they've helped lately. And one of the things we learned last night in the Parker Task Force was that now there is an increase in rent. A rental, there's a 48% increase in rental assistance from this year to last year. So Parker Task Force, one of the things they do is help people with rental assistance. So they're now seeing a lot more folks that are struggling in rental assistance. And so I just want to briefly mention some of the things that the Parker Task Force does here in Parker to help people. They have a food bank. They have a senior program, a school backpack program. They have a food bank, they have a senior program, a school backpack program, medical and dental assistance. Rental assistance to prevent evictions, utility assistance, assistance to prevent shut offs. A special circumstance program, motel stays and vouchers. Holiday programs, school supplies, counseling and a community service uh, program for Parker Team Corp.
I think I want to tag on that because what they presented last night. Is that. They're not going to take over just taking care of these things for people. They want to make sure that these people have a plan for the next month's rent. Or, you know, they don't intend to give somebody rent money if they're not working towards a plan for the next month. This is not just, you know, one time and done. This is, you have to come in and work with them and develop. How you're going to um, get yourself to a position where you can take care of yourself. And they also work with the Douglas Arapa Home Workplace Program, which is uh, helping to place people in. You know, jobs if they're out of a job. But there again, it's going to be difficult in Parker. Because of the cost of living in this area. It's high.
It, it's, yeah, it's very high and the, the rent issue is. Is becoming very difficult for a lot of people. I think the average rent for a one bedroom in Parker is somewhere between. Twelve hundred and fifteen hundred dollars a month. And that would probably be on the low end. Uh, two bedroom apartment in Parker is probably well over two thousand dollars a month. So the Parker Task Force.
Four thousand, starting at four.
Four thousand. So. We, as I sit on this task force and issues come to light. You know, my job on council is to bring those issues to. The committee to discuss and one of the issues I'm going to bring to the committee to discuss last night. That was brought up by Steve Budnack, the director of the Parker Task Force. Is that Douglas County for several years used to have an office right in the Parker Task Force. That would help people get on various county, federal and state assistance programs. So if someone came to the task force and they needed to get on Medicaid, they needed. Uh, help with food stamps or. They needed to get their paperwork in order to apply for section eight housing choice voucher program. The Parker Task Force had an office right within their building to help folks fill out this paperwork. This paperwork is very involved. Any federal, state or county program that you have has a lot of paperwork. To get the assistance you need. From those, from either the state, county or federal government. And so unfortunately. Though that Douglas County removed those employees from the Parker Task Force during COVID. And they have not come back. And so that's big because unfortunately now. Folks that need help that come to the task, Parker Task Force have to go down to the Douglas County. Uh, building in Castle Rock to receive that same help, whereas before they could get the help right in Parker. And so this is an issue that I'll bring to the Douglas County uh, Homeless Initiative to discuss how we can get. Douglas County. Folks, employees back in our building to help people in Parker. These are the little triumphs that we can have for our community to help folks that need a leg up.
And I think the other, the thing that um. We're facing a major issue with RTD. And we give them, I don't know what it's going to be this year. We've been giving them anywhere from eleven to, and it goes up every year, thirteen million dollars. And we don't even get a million dollars in service back. So our people can't use RTD with a regular, you know. Plan to really go anywhere. And so what's happening is these folks may not have a car that runs. They have to depend on public transportation. We don't have it. There's no way for them to take public transportation to get to Castle Rock where the county offices are. So that just continues to compound the problem. So I think you're going to see town council doing as much as they can to get the county to bring those services back up to Parker.
Well. Well, that's a, a lot of work. It seems like COVID has uh, put a lot of pressure. Even though, you know, some people say it's over and, and that shouldn't be a big problem and. You know, where everywhere you go, it's like, oh, this is, this isn't working anymore because, because of COVID. So, you know, you have to go, you have to go somewhere else to get uh. Get this service or, or something like that and, you know, just like to see this all get done and over with so that uh, people can. Who need the help can uh, can get those, get that help with that. So I'm just gonna go out on a limb here. Laura, what, when you're done, you already got two years left on town council?
Yes.
Are you gonna run for town council or are you gonna go for a county commissioner or something? Gonna go bigger?
Well, that's a giant leap, I will say that.
Yes, oh yeah, it's a big leap.
County Commissioner is, is a full-time job. Um, and I still feel like I have a lot of work here to do in Parker. I feel like so far I've been here two years. And I've been able to make some really good internal changes and some external changes as well. That council has approved um, to some changes on leadership. And some changes on ethics and getting some documents in place. And so I still, I think I have a lot of work to do in Parker. And every time I go to a meeting, I see a new issue come up that, that we have to discuss, so. Right now I have a, I have a, a family. I have a small, my, my sons are young. My son Martin is five and my son John is six. And so I have significant family responsibilities. And lots of homework at this age, I'm very surprised, but that's okay. Mom is, mom is busy with homework and piano lessons, so. To answer your question, I'm gonna have to see. Uh, about everything. Um, I'm really enjoying my time on council and I have two more years. So I'll have to make that decision whether to run or not for Parker Town Council, I think the year after next.
Right.
Um, I like, I like government, I like politics. And I think I would like to stay for as long as I can, but I don't know what that looks like. I know that I'm a leader. Um, I was a leader in the army as a, as I made the rank of full burn Colonel. I commanded a unit in the, the JAG Corps before I left in the reserves. And I know I can work hard and I know I can make good decisions and come to logical conclusions, but I also have a heart for people. And so my heart for people and seeing them thrive and seeing us. Get some of these issues taken care of, like the one I just mentioned. Is, is really at my heart. And so we need politicians, elected officials. That want to solve problems for people in office. And that is at the heart of who I am. I like to solve problems and I like to help people, so I guess we're gonna see. What the future holds for me. I'm not, not sure yet because my family is always a major consideration. And of course, my husband has to improve anything I do, right? We're a team.
Oh yes, I, I was told if I run for another office, I will be divorced because she's not gonna do it, so that's, that's the end of my.
Yeah, and I think that's at the heart of a good, especially council person. Is family first. Because when you do family first, that broadens what you're reaching out to, who you're touching in the community. And, you know, you see some problems, you see some things that have to change or you want to work towards. And the goal then is you've seen this problem, now how do we solve it? And that, solving that problem may involve more than one level of government. There are several things coming up that are going to involve more than one level of government that we're going to be looking at, so um. But to me, family first is the basics.
Yep, yep, sounds good. I'm just trying to think, um, anything else exciting coming up in Parker or?
Oh yeah.
Although, oh, okay.
Um, we have an issue that's going to be coming up again and again till it happens. And that is we have a half a percent sales tax on consumable food items. Okay, Denver has dropped that, Aurora's dropped that, Castle Rock has dropped that, and I'm not sure about Laundrie. But when we first started Parker, we had very little other than a couple of grocery stores and a small hardware store. We had no other source of revenue at that point, so we put in a food tax. Because we had to have some money to develop and run Parker. We far exceeded that now. And some of us feel that it's time to drop that half percent sales tax on food. We'll keep it on other things, but this one, we feel we need to let the people take back. And so there's discussion on council, budgeting issues. We don't seem to have a trouble increasing our budget every year, but we have resistance on this particular issue. So that's going to be a future issue.
That's uh.
One of, yeah, one of the other ones, um, we keep looking at master plans and zoning and changes. We're just changing. You know, the parks development policy plan, which is good. I haven't looked into it yet. It was on discussion last night and I didn't get to the meeting until late, but I'll be looking at the details. Um, on what that's requiring, but one of the things when you look at um. Housing. If you look at the older subdivisions, the lots were bigger and there was more room in between them. Now, those lot sizes are getting smaller and smaller and smaller and you might be lucky. If you have five to seven feet to your property line or less. And so that is how they increase density, but also keep the developers' profits up. And so when I look at that, uh, right now we're facing some utility issues in town. And um. Where those can go. We don't want them in the front of the, in the front yard. We want them to stay in the side lot in the backyard and now we're running into problems where, well, the window well might be too large. Because the easements are smaller for them to put the power through. So you can see where, you know, increasing density is now affecting some other things. And so we're going to strong, take a strong look at some of those issues.
Yeah, that, that reminds me of, lived in California for a while. It seemed like you could uh, reach out of your window. And the other person on the other side of you could reach out of their window and you could touch hands. You were, in some places you were so close together that uh.
I have, uh, you know, you drive in downtown Denver, old Denver.
Oh yeah.
And those walls are right next door to each other. And I'm like, they had all that land. But again, they were looking at infrastructure costs, right? Streets, roads, sidewalks.
Right.
And um, frankly, I don't know how they built some of those. Because their walls are touching, but they're separate units. So uh, I certainly don't want to get to that point in Parker, but I think we're gonna have to take a strong look at what we're doing with our zoning. And, and density issues, because I think our utilities are going to force us to take a stronger look at that.
Yep, that's, that's probably something that's going to be coming up on a lot of uh, a lot of towns across. Across the country probably is, is trying to cram as many houses on a, on a plot of land as they possibly can, so.
Yeah, and open space is a hot issue.
Yep.
And it's getting harder and harder to acquire open space. We can, you know, acquire open space in riparian areas where we have flood issues or whatever else. But good quality open space, it's really hard. Because you have to pay premium price for that land.
Oh yeah.
And where can that go? But I think it's really important to look at that. And there are different issues. The county's open space, they're taking um. These farmland pieces in. Property owners can maintain that land for as long as they have family that want to operate that land. But it, and they don't have to pay taxes on it. Which is a huge incentive and we don't have any of that property available to us in Parker at this point in time. But I do think it's something we're gonna have to look at.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the population of, of, of Parker? I don't.
Um, about sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand, okay.
The surrounding area is well over a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, so yeah, a kind of a medium, medium to small town kind of crammed in there a little bit, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
And we went all the way to Supreme Court with Douglas County. In the past because uh, Aurora annexed into Douglas County. Right up against our large acre lots. And that was a hugely contentious issue with one court battle after another. We eventually lost in the Supreme Court.
Interesting. I'm kind of some, sometimes I'm glad I live out in the, out in the boonies where, you know, the only, the gunfire that you hear is usually people out hunting. The geese and, and the ducks and stuff, so yeah, we don't have that uh, some of those problems. Land's all over the place, but like right now, it's, wind's blowing a little bit. And it's dirt's flying everywhere, so.
Well, and we have the similar traffic issues to everywhere else. I think our. Staff working on traffic are coming up with some really interesting solutions, timing lights based on traffic. Using electronics to help us maintain that traffic flow. Because at one point in time before they started doing this, I could be in the north side of Parker. And trying to get to Main Street would take me forty minutes in peak rush hour.
Wow.
And that was like three miles.
Wow.
So um, that's not happening anymore, so they've made some good improvements.
Yeah, traffic is, is always a big thing. We're just, uh, we, when I moved here, we were a one stoplight town. Now we have two stoplights and they just build a roundabout, so we are moving up in the world with the traffic mitigation. We got a, we got a roundabout now, so. Um, yeah, traffic is, is another big, uh, big issue. It seems like they, especially in, in Denver is. In that whole area, when we drive down there is, you know, they, they, they plan the roads for the fifties. And maybe the early sixties and then they haven't done any, any big major overhaul plan for that, you know, for this, for these millions of people that seem to. Move in in the last probably two years, coming from all over the place wanting to, wanting to live here and the roads are still, still the same and. Something's gotta give and.
Yeah, your roads up north there, I have to take them on a routine basis when I twenty-five stops.
Oh yeah.
And so I'm going east up eighty-five and then cutting across on county roads up there. And you're right, those county roads are small, narrow and they're not direct. They follow the section lines.
Yes, they're all big giant two mile squares is what they all are, so.
Right.
Yep, so it's, it's pretty easy to get around here because it's just a big two mile, two mile blocks and you just kind of figure out where you're going from there, so.
I have a couple of personal goals. That's gonna take a huge effort with multiple levels of government. And that's not going to be easy to put together, but I think I have people who will work with me on this because this will be. You know, involving the town, but it's gonna involve communities and the residents of those communities. And the first one is our kids have been asking. For an Olympic sized competitive pool and a large ice skating rink for hockey for our teams. And I have witnessed this for fifty years and it's not happened. And it's time for Douglas County to come together with all our different governments. And find a way to do an agreement and get this kind of a process done. I mean, uh, Thornton can do it, Arvada can do it. Fort Collins can do it, Colorado Springs can do it. Why can Douglas County not do it?
So you don't, you don't have a big uh, like a rec center or something like that down there or?
We have rec centers, but they're not. We have rec centers, but they're not the Olympic sized competitive type pools. Plus the fact that with the teams that are wanting to swim, our high schools don't have pools. And so they have to seek out practice times at these local pools. But they don't have a competitive pool to offer competitions or compete in. It's a major problem. These kids are driving a long ways and they have to practice at five AM. Because that's about the only time they can get into the recreation center pools. And they cannot hold competitive events there.
Right, right, yep. When understood that went through with uh, something similar. Here, our high school has, well, our, we just built a new high school, but now our middle school has a a pool in it and. Uh, when we built our rec center, we just couldn't afford to put uh, water. Water was a big, big issue when you start building pools and. Water slides and things like that. We couldn't afford to have a pool put into there. So understand.
Yeah, a great recreational pool setup. But not a competitive pool setup for the students.
Right, lanes and all that other good stuff. So, yeah, understand that, yep.
That's an issue that. That, as Cheryl said, it it needs to be solved at the county level. Um, the counties, the the towns within Douglas County need to come together. And this is something that the county commissioners could address at their level. I do know that Castle Rock is exploring a competitive level pool. Whether that will go through or not, we don't know. But all three of our recreation centers here in town are funded with a point five sales percent. That's a tax, that's the sales tax, point five percent is dedicated to our parks and recreation center. And as we move forward into the future, twenty thirty and beyond. I believe we are looking to, we are, we are looking now to budget those funds. For an additional recreation center after twenty thirty. Is that correct, Cheryl?
I believe so, one further to the southwest.
So we do, we're we're expected as a town to increase in population. Right about ninety thousand plus by twenty fifty. So we're at sixty thousand now. And that's in incorporated Parker. Now, right outside of Parker, we have an unincorporated area. Just to the south of us and all on all sides of us that brings the the population. Of our area to about eighty thousand, but that's not incorporated.
No, it's actually a hundred and fifty, Laura.
A hundred and fifty, thank you, Cheryl. Um, so Parker itself is looking to grow incorporated Parker to ninety thousand by twenty fifty. So we're we're really having to tackle difficult, difficult issues in Parker. And that's why I always stress running for. Town council or city council, as they call it, and other areas really requires. An in-depth education and a willingness to learn about these complicated issues. One of the more interesting issues we had come up last night in one of our study sessions was. On the installation of fiber optics in Parker and how complex of a process that is. How that's mandated by federal law. And towns will have to negotiate with companies on a master license agreement. When fiber optic cable is installed. And installing that fiber optic cable is is rather, it's going to be destructive to a community. This um, not destructive, but. It's going to interfere in the community in the installation. So they do have to go into the ground. They have to put the fiber optic cable in. And that also will require that on the homeowner's property as well. And so we we learned about that last night, how our town is now. In the midst of drafting a master license agreement with fiber optic cable companies to do this. And it's it's not an easy process. And not all the issues come that come before us as. A town council member are issues that we can control. And this is one of them. Um, the the federal government has. Passed laws that stated that the five, these companies can install fiber optic. Wires in any town and it's up to the town to negotiate that master license agreement.
And the further that, they want to go into public utility areas. Not into easements. So easements would take it on the side of the house or in the rear where our power goes. They want to be right up front, street side. And we have just opposed doing this with utilities. So now comes down federal law saying, well, now you got to do this with fiber. It's a very frustrating situation at times to be forced to do things. Parker is, there are two types of towns in the state of Colorado, statutory towns and home rule towns. Or home rule, we we stay at town, home rule cities, very few of those, but mostly home rule towns. And so you have to follow what the state also creates. Because formation is under the state of a municipality. And so there are things that the state legislature keeps passing on down. To the local level, whether we like it or not. And at times it's problematic. There are times when we have choices. But not always when it comes down to very, we don't really have a lot of choice of federal law. And sometimes that it's divert, you know, diverted over to the state, to the state to implement. And we've had a number of state statutes coming down that impact us in Parker. As it does any other municipality in Colorado. And we may not agree with it. Absolutely opposed to it, but we don't have a choice.
Yeah, we we just got um. Um, our. Fiber optic, there's a company running around in town now and it's just going to be interesting to see how they uh. Uh, implement that because it's it's all over the place. Their new fiber optic stuff and I haven't seen. I haven't seen too much going on yet, but um, tiny little town, we should be able to see something happen. It's either going to happen real quick or it's going to take forever. So um.
Well, I've had in a subdivision up in northern Colorado in Laramie County. The fiber company ran rampant. And they didn't tell us where they were putting the lines. They didn't uh, bury them properly. And so now when our road crews go through and they disrupt a line, I've got multiple fines. Because we didn't even know they were there. Um, with cuts. And then now we're doing eight one one locates every time, but. The locate process gives you a three foot width. Of where that line might be. And it still might be in the middle of a road and we still cut it. So it's it's an expensive process.
Yeah, I'm not too, I'm not too sure about it. You know, something that's been forced down from a government level saying, hey, you guys. You got to have fiber optics in there. And I guess for some, for some people, it'll be great. Some of the businesses and things like that will be great to have because we have really terrible. Uh, internet out here. And um, so you know, it might be good. Maybe in the in the the short run, you know, people have all this great. Uh, access to a lot of data, but I don't know. I don't know.
If you're in a municipality, you need to do your own, as we're finding out last night, master license agreement. With these companies. And you can control to federal standards. Otherwise, they may not meet federal standards and uh, installation.
Yep. Yeah, that's why I'm not, I'm not allowed to run for town council. So can't be on that. Can't do those, can't do those things anymore. This, my doing this podcast is cutting into the into the time. So. Already having problems with that, but uh, it it helps, it helps people. So that's what uh, we're doing. So. So do you have anything else or? Anything else that anybody want to say? Cheryl, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna con Laura into running for mayor next time, right?
No, probably not, because our current mayor is awesome.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, I I, you know, I'm not so happy with the former mayor, but the current ma- mayor is really awesome. And so, you know, if he so chooses to run, you know, my support would go there. But if he doesn't run, definitely Laura.
There you go. There you go. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start working, working angles all the way up here from northern Colorado to get Laura some somewhere else. Get her out of, out of town council and get her to mayor or something, something like that.
But I I certainly love our town and. Parker's just a beautiful place. And and any anyone thinking about running for office. Government is, I've I've been in government my whole life with the military. And then I worked for the federal government as an attorney for many years. So. I had a twenty-eight year career as a, as an attorney in government. And retired from the reserves, army reserves as a colonel. So I understand it. And and Cheryl understands it too. So that's the biggest issue that I see is. Do you have any experience in government? Or do you have a great willingness to understand how it works? And do you want to apply your experience and knowledge to help the town? So on town council, we have people with business backgrounds, IT backgrounds, firefighter, a lawyer, real estate. And I think everybody brings that expertise to the table. So it is a, it is a more serious position. And now that our, our job description is rewritten to reflect that, one of my big pushes. Was getting that job description properly shown on our website. And one of my other initiatives was also. To have an ethics guidelines for elected officials. We had all of our ethics um, information scattered throughout our charter and. Um, in all different places when I came in board and our our former chief attorney, Jim Looney. I had asked, pushed this initiative with council members to get all of our ethical policies in one place. To have a guideline for a guideline, ethical guidelines for elected officials written. And now we have that as well. And one of the other initiatives I came on board with was leadership principles. Was it, what does it take to be a good leader? What type of mindset do you have to have? Flexibility, adaptability, resilience. And. Leadership is about working together, collaborating. And so I wrote a leadership document and also have provided that to the town, which will be implemented. Um, throughout the town as well. And and already has been implemented at the town council level. We, we always can disagree on issues at the town council level. But the objective for all of us or any elected official is to respectfully disagree. State your facts and evidence, get that on the record, why you are advocating a particular way. But to come together and to collaborate and to problem solve, not to devolve. From what I've seen in some governments, not to devolve into chaos or name calling. Or any type of negative behavior. And once again, I'm so grateful, we don't have that on our town council. We come together and we problem solve. And I, I do feel that I have been instrumental. In trying to get that across to other town council members that we're here to problem solve. And we're here to discuss matters fully. And even if we disagree with one another, let's do it respectfully. And let's stick to the issues at hand. And I think Cheryl would agree that I've, I've been that force on town council, wouldn't you, Cheryl?
Absolutely, because nobody else has taken the time to look into it. And with your background, it it, it's great to have that background on council because it's, you know, another perspective. That we need to look at. But I also think it's great for prospective council members. They need to have a little more understanding of what they're, what they're getting into. Do they have the time? Do they have the background? And if they don't have the background, but they have a desire. Maybe that will help them develop that experience.
Yep, yep. Yep, good old military leadership, always uh, always have gotten me through some, some, some rough stuff. I I got out of the military and didn't want to have anything else to do with the government. So, you know, I've been in my, well. Government healthcare my whole life and just. Um, but uh, yeah, I didn't want to have anything else to do with government and so, but yeah, that military leadership. Uh, has always been something I've always been able to fall back on. And that's a good uh, a good uh, resource to to have and and to use. Um. So if you don't have anything else, I do, I do want to just thanks, thank both of you for coming on. It's very interesting to learn about another. Another town at the other end of the state, not quite the other end of the state, but quite a ways away. And uh, you're more than welcome to come on anytime. Um, talk about what's going on in in Parker and. You know, you've got something big going on, you want to put it out there. I would, you know, more. Just, it'd be great to to be able to do that.
Talk to us after November seventh.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, that's uh, that's a lot of people are saying that. Come back and talk to me after. I always say, you know, when you become state representative so and so, uh, you know, come back and. Talk to me a couple of months after that to see how you, you know, how things are going and how how you. Thought, you know, expectations were met and then, you know, how things are going and and things like that. So, you know, maybe after.
November seventh, after we see the plan coming in from this development company, there'd be a lot of discussion then.
Yeah, after, after this big go around of uh, of elections with some strange. Um, things that are on the, on the ballot, it'll be interesting to see how that all plays out. And yeah, it just, it's going to be interesting the next couple of years. So hopefully uh, hopefully things go, go better. So, but yeah, anytime you want to uh, come on and and talk about what's going on in Parker and. And uh, you know, around that area, you're more than welcome to come back and just, you know, contact me and hey, we'll just set it up and. You can talk for thirty, forty minutes about how wonderful and great now everybody needs to move to Parker.
Well, definitely, definitely vote for Cheryl Pogue if you live in Parker.
Yep.
She's on your ballot. And uh, like I said, Cheryl has wisdom, grace, intelligence. She understands the issues and I'm so happy to endorse my colleague. Cheryl Pogue for Parker, Parker Town Council in the twenty twenty-two November election.
Well, thank you, Laura. It's gonna be fun.
Oh, yeah. Yep, well, hopefully things turn out good for you and uh. And things keep moving forward in in Parker. Sounds, sounds like you got a lot on your plate and. And it sounds like it'll be uh, everything comes out right. It'll be uh, be pretty nice workout for everybody.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Yes, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
Yep, thank you. Right.
We'll see you next time. Thank you.
Yep, bye.